So, welcome everybody to the Town of Waterboro Planning Board meeting for November
November 6.
6. 2024. Angela, can we start with Roca?
Rick Madruga.
Here.
Rebecca Higgins.
Here.
Stacy Walker.
Here.
Diane Gray.
Here.
James Berias is traveling for work tonight.
Next item on the agenda, minutes from previous meetings, which we do not have. Next is public hearing, we also don't have. So then we move on to old business. First on the agenda is amendment request, Waterboro Woodyard subdivision, direct construction LLC McSear. All right, so this is the request for a couple of waivers, right, from the original subdivision.
Previously, you guys needed the waiver for the sprinkler system for lot 8. You asked for some measurements regarding house location versus hydrants, dry hydrants, water sources. So in front of you, you have that waiver request with those measurements.
I think we had had some discussion about, I think there was a recommendation, correct, that once it's in the subdivision, there was kind of sprinklers required, and I think now the, since it's technically not in that room, the question was whether it was needed. I think we had had some discussion about, I don't know that we had concern with it necessarily.
We didn't have, well, from what I remember is Mike was fine with it, and I think we all said that it was not a problem because it was outside the road.
Right, yeah.
For the added expense.
Right.
That that would be acceptable. That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Sounds right.
And I think, I think the only thing is, I think we needed some updates to the plans, correct?
Yes.
In order to compensate for the telephone calls and the...
Do they have the updated document of the...
So you have in front of you the ones that are recorded with the registry, but you have on sheet three, it does show your pole required, the proposed pole locations. Should you accept this or approve this amendment, then note number five would be adjusted and amended to show that it's no longer about below ground utilities, it would be above ground. And on sheet one, note 21 would also be adjusted to include that lot eight will be exempt from any sprinkler requirement. And those changes are pending, as it is.
Yeah, okay. So, based on what we decided, I'm assuming we'd need to have a public hearing, correct, since it's amendment to a subdivision? So, if everybody's thoughts are good to move it to the next topic, please?
Do you see any issues?
I don't have any concerns either.
Okay. So, we need a motion for that, correct?
It was 1:30 this morning when you got...
Alright, so I think we need a motion to approve the changes and move it to public hearing, correct? Based on the waiver.
And accept the waiver.
Right?
Yes.
I need a motion for that, correct?
I will give you a motion, or put a motion in play for accepting the changes on the plans and the waiver as written. Is that it?
With the, I think, well, we can have a public hearing still, but we do need the updates to the plans as well.
Changes to the plans.
Yes.
Okay.
I know it's on...
I'll second that.
All those favorable? So Angela, what would you need the...
November 6, December, are you? Yeah, to give notification, I would be looking at December 4, or 6. Yeah, we would have to go into December 4 for all the...
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for worrying.
Yep.
Alright, so next item on the agenda is 200 Main Street Soccer Realty Associates LLC. Do you need to... I don't know.
Do I need to just be silent?
Does Stacy need to recuse herself each time?
I don't know what your connection is.
My land abuts this property.
Oh.
Would we still be able to continue if she recuses?
Alright, so we don't have to...
No, we have a forum.
Well, she can't vote.
Right.
So, you no longer have a call. Because you need a minimum of a four, more than that, time.
We can discuss, right, but we just can't make any motions.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that then. Alright, so, good, new plans? So I guess maybe we should start with, maybe what you...
I have a, I do have a question.
Okay.
Southern Main Planning. I don't, I want to make sure that they were looking at this plan, that they, they did a memo for the preliminary plan, but it's not dated, and I have more than one here. I just wanted to make sure we're working on the same one. Yes.
Yes, her five-page memo is the one that goes with these plans.
Yes.
Thank you.
It has a date at the top, November 5th, yesterday.
Okay. So, with this is, we're still in the process of doing stormwater. That's what, I believe you, a lot of that is in here. But I'll answer as much as I can in here, and make sure it gets on the plan.
Okay. Kind of how we want to go, just go kind of maybe bullet by bullet through the other several, and talk through those? Can you start there? Just a place to start?
Yeah, whatever works for you all.
Okay. Yeah, we'll use this as a kind of guide, so. So I guess, maybe Michaela, you can mark us through what you've...
Sure. I mean, I'll just start with the overview, that, you know, the uses are good, the number of units for the acreage is good, all kind of like the big picture pieces are looking great. The applicant also made a lot of the sketches, the changes suggested from the initial sketch plan, so that's always really appreciated. And then I put the applicable ordinances, the site plan review ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and the land subdivision regulations, just to be clear about the different sections of Waterboro code that I used, and then noted that the site plan review ordinance, although a separate document, and is the exact same stuff that's under the site plan review ordinance section of the zoning ordinance, so that's maybe something we can clean up in the future. They are the same, so it doesn't really matter, but I just wanted to note that in there, just to make sure we're all on the same page there. Okay, so then, I guess I'll just start by summarizing that for each of the standards I was looking at, right, like whether the materials required were submitted, and then whether the content of the materials aligned with the standards and goals in the ordinance. So, since I went article by article, there's a kind of a mixture of those two types of assessments within each one. So to start looking at the site plan review standards, the applicant shows the footprints of all buildings, but there needs to be access and use shown as well, so it needs a little bit more detail showing, you know, the exits and entrances, and for the emergency rescue assurances as well, this generally should include the location of windows, so we can be sure that if there's an emergency and someone's on the top floor, that we know that they can be rescued.
Sure.
A note that if there's planned signage, that this should be shown. The proposed type of lighting and the direction of the lighting should be included. And then I should also know in parentheses with like the B number in this section, or in other sections, standard number, that's the direct line in the ordinance that it's referencing, so that should be helpful. And then, just a note that the lights, especially in this instance, should be full cutoff or shielded, because they'll be pretty close to, you know, three-story residential buildings, so if they're not, they're going to be providing glare right into the windows of the units. The next one, I'd like to see more information on the proposed landscaping. The site plan does show the tree line to approximate the extent of the clearing needs, so that's great, but in terms of the kind of the parts of the site that the people who live there and who go to the commercial units will be interacting with, we need to see what the landscaping might look like for that. And then, there's a lot of criteria in section 2.09b9 about the different environmental studies, and I know the site plan referenced them, I just didn't see copies of those. So I, it sounds like they're either in process or have been done, but just need to make sure that those accompany the site plan itself. So that's the first section. Are there any comments or questions on that?
I do. The windows that you're referring to, are you saying that you want to see an elevation of the buildings themselves?
I think that would be really helpful, yes. I think with that standard and then with...
Is that part of the site plan, or is that a part of the building plan?
I mean, it can depend with this particular development, given that it's multifamily with multiple stories, and commercial building, there are some standards about the massing and design of buildings, and so I think it would be really hard to meet those standards without an elevation. And since an elevation will have to be done at some point, I know it might be like maybe a sooner expense for the applicant than anticipated, but I think it would really help with evaluating a bunch of the different standards in here, including that one. Any other questions on that section?
I didn't have any in this section, no. I didn't have any in this section, any questions, or Michaela, at least, can you? Everybody else do?
I'm good.
Okay. Section 2.10 is the site plan review standards, so there's a standard about lighting, and there are a couple of different standards about lighting, so, yeah, I mentioned it in the previous section even, but again, more detail on the lighting would be helpful to be able to review that standard. The second one, so the dumpsters location, I have some concerns about. It's pretty far from buildings one and two, it's located on the west side of the access road, there's no proposed crosswalk along that access road, and the sidewalk that is on the east side of the access road, or there is no sidewalk on the east side of the access road, it stops, and it continues only along the loop part. So for me, when I'm looking at that, and looking at the location of the dumpster, I'm seeing that the residents of building one, carrying their trash, are not going to be walking indirectly around the detention pond on the loop road to get to the dumpster, right? Like, we know human behavior, they're going to be going straight line distance, especially carrying stuff, and so that the location there with the fact that there's no sidewalk on that road is making me think about like pedestrian safety and circulation on the site. Additionally, with a dumpster being quite that far from a building, I have some concerns about just, you know, people can be lazy, and if the dumpster is pretty far away, I anticipate it maybe not being utilized the way it should be, which could, you know, cause property upkeep and litter concerns. So, if the dumpster location stays where it was, I think it's, the sidewalk there is absolutely needed, and then, secondly, I think there could be a reconsideration of the location of the dumpster and/or more than one dumpster.
What do you think about the dumpster being next to the snow push on each block?
Yeah.
Makes it closer, so three dumpsters?
In the rear?
Yeah.
In the rear?
In the, yeah, where the, where the snow push is.
Okay.
That's, it's big enough to probably put a dumpster alongside the snow push.
I think that makes a lot more sense. Also for people, you know, if they have mobility impairments or whatnot, they don't have to go quite so far. But the board can speak to that also, sorry, I had to mean, not meaning to, but from my perspective, that sounds good. Yeah, I kind of spoke to the sidewalk concern, in addition to the direct connection, if the dumpster were to remain there, folks in building three are probably going to be walking just straight along the road to, they want to leave the development to access, you know, the puller pug that's right there, or the farm stand, or the library. So, I have some concern about not continuing that sidewalk along the side of the access road there. Or alternatively, you know, some sort of path, you know, on the edge of the detention pond, or some, I think something to ensure that there can be safe pedestrian access there would be helpful.
I think the safest and most aesthetic would be at the end of that snow push.
For the sidewalk?
No, for the, you still want a sidewalk on the other side, are you going to remove that dumpster?
Well, I was...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
From this end to here, it looks like, from what I'm seeing, Michaela, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but from like building three, up in, along the roadside of the retention pond, to connect to the other one on building, by building one's parking?
Yeah. My concern again is just like, right, people are going to walk in the shortest street line possible.
You know, didn't we, didn't we talk about this on the last one, I think?
Can I approach you?
Sure.
So, aren't we going to come from here, and make that a sidewalk right there?
I thought we were going to.
And then put the lines to cross?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, I missed that.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, do the sidewalk to there, do a crossing?
Mm-hmm.
Crosswalk.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That, yeah, that was my concern. Any comments from the board on the sidewalk piece there?
No, other than the fact, I thought even originally when we had approved the, I guess, concept of this, that there was a lot of discussion about sidewalks in general, and the foot traffic, and where it would take people, and the fact that it would take them towards Hannaford, that area, which is already a kind of congested intersection already.
You're talking on the 202 side?
Yeah, yeah, I think that was, a lot of our discussion was putting that number of people in there, and the fact that, how much foot traffic would it create there? I think the other, I don't think this is our jurisdiction, but I'm also concerned with, this is another exit point onto 202, in a very short stretch of area that's already hard to get out of, that, you know, if you try to get out of the dump and take off Bennett Hill Road, at any point, you try to take a left-hand turn, transfer station, but you try to take a left-hand turn out of there...
Right, you can't even get out of the farm stand.
You can't get out of the farm stand, you can't...
Certain times of year.
If I could direct you to the memorandum from Sebagotec that I supplied, please?
Yeah.
In regards to sidewalks, the last, the last time we sat, actually, one of the first times we sat with you, the engineer went over that it wasn't feasible for DOT not giving the approvals to run it up there as far as it is. I'm not sure who was on the board, I'm sorry.
I was, but I wasn't necessarily a favorite. It was my concern before, and it's why I took the stance that I did, is the fact that I think we're putting a lot of people in a congested area, and we're just going to create more congestion, but, like I said, I don't, I don't think it's our jurisdiction to...
Yeah.
But I think that the more safety we can give to people, because they're going to be on foot, walking to those different places, importantly. Any other questions in this section?
The standard seven, under the site plan review standards, requires the planning board to ensure the bulk height or design of proposed building structures or paved areas will not have significant detrimental effect on private development on adjacent properties. So that was another standard, similar to the one before, where I think the building elevation would be really helpful, so that the board can evaluate that appropriately. And with that, I do have some concerns about the fencing with the retention pond, the fact that the residential buildings are all oriented around this, I believe it's a four-foot steel mesh fence, and that that's kind of the huge part of the center of the development. For me, it feels very institutional.
Agreed.
So I'm hoping that, and I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what the options are here, but I'm curious, is a fence necessary? Is it necessary, can it be moved further down?
It's only four or five feet, so I don't see why it is necessary.
Because it, I mean, it seems like the slope is fairly steep for the detention pond, but it also is most likely not going to have water in it, except for extreme weather, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I feel like it's not necessary. And then that becomes a space that people can, you know, go walk in, or sit in, or whatever.
Be a place for landscaping around there.
Yeah, the fence isn't necessary, I think it's a win-win, it'll save the applicant some money, and also, I think it'll be prettier.
Sure.
Okay. Any, were there any questions from the board about that?
Nope.
Yeah, the zoning districts, that all, that all looks great, so I, nothing there. And then the commercial design standards, section 4.12, or 12, 4.12, there are six standards in there for all new commercial buildings that have access on Route 202. So I would like the site plan to just demonstrate that the design standards will be met, whether that's elevations or example designs accompanied with, you know, statements about what final designs would look like, I think, at the very least should be provided. Yeah, and then, traffic and parking looks good, I did just have a question on parking programming, just think it's helpful to know if, you know, this is resident-only parking, if there will be signs to that nature, if there are specific guest parking areas, or guest parking spaces, or, you know, what the approach is there. I think it's just, you know, not necessary for this preliminary plan, but going into the final plan, I think it's just good information to have. Okay.
Because you don't have a limit on the number of people that you really allow in a unit?
Well, there's only, there is six one-bedrooms and six two-bedrooms per building, so there's only so many people that are going to be in a bedroom.
Presumably.
A lot of fold-out couches.
Right, right.
I'm sure that that can be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, if you have a, you know, family, two teenagers, right, you got potentially four cars per unit?
Maybe, we don't have enough for that.
Maybe, I, for some reason, I just, I don't, I don't see this being a teenager place. The first floor is going to be, one unit is for handicap, three of the units, all on the first floor, handicapped.
Okay.
Because you don't have a limit on the number of people that you really allow in a unit?
Well, there's only, there is six one-bedrooms and six two-bedrooms per building, so there's only so many people that are going to be in a bedroom.
Presumably.
Presumably. A lot of fold-out couches.
Right, right.
So I'm sure that that can be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking if you have a, you know, family, two teenagers, right, you've got potentially four cars per unit?
Maybe, we don't have enough for that.
Maybe, I, for some reason, I just, I don't, I don't see this being a teenager place. The first floor is going to be, one unit is for handicap, three of the units, all on the first floor, handicapped accessible. So we're more geared to be either first-time or elderly.
Okay.
That's what I see.
That's your, can I?
I'd also be surprised if there were four, four cars in the unit.
Yeah, right.
And I'm, you know, the tenant agreement can limit the number of cars per unit as well, if that's a concern from the landlord, so that can be addressed. Yeah, the next section is all the subdivision regulations. I think, I'm realizing now that I just did not see some of the studies and things, so if I mention those in the memo.
Yeah, those just came in this afternoon.
Oh, they came in this afternoon, okay, well, that makes sense. So now some of those have been provided, which is great, but I think a lot of the text on this is about those studies being provided. And then the other big thing, or two, two other things, I think a narrative about the breakdown of the units and your anticipated tenancy and things like that would be helpful because it also influences, you know, what we expect from the behavior of the people on the site and also impacts how we're evaluating whether it's designed to meet the standards. So I think that would be helpful to have provided.
Could you give me an example, please?
Of which piece?
Of that last that you just mentioned.
So I'm thinking with the open space requirement, for example, the board can require certain recreation or open space things with developments of this size and nature. And so if the unit break down, you said just now it's six one-bedroom and six two-bedroom units, so probably not a lot of people with, you know, many young children will be there. So that tells me like, okay, we don't, we probably don't need to ask for a playground on the site because there probably won't be a huge need for that sort of recreation amenity. However, if it is like really geared toward maybe older folks or like, you know, young adults, something like, you know, having an adequate seating outside in the landscaped areas for the older adults and, you know, maybe having like a disc golf basket or, you know, some little amenities like that as part of the recreation or open space requirement can be related to the type of units provided. And so that's kind of, that's where my mind goes there, is just making sure that those things are, you know, aligned and making sense with what's expected from the development.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah.
So open space, if you're going to make that recreational, does that mean cutting, clearing?
It doesn't have to, no.
Or use a frisbee golf or whatever you call that, whatever the word is.
Disc golf.
Disc golf, sorry.
Those are often just in the woods, there's not much clearing for those at all, it's usually just some like baskets set up. Yeah. But the planning board does have the authority to ask for different open space recreation services and so, and we know that like, you know, a good chunk of the property is totally undeveloped and so that's why I kind of put those questions or thoughts in there because it's something that can be, that can be considered with this application.
So can I ask that question?
Yes.
So the open space is across the brook, so that would mean they would need a safe bridge to get across the brook?
I do not think it's across the brook.
I think there's, there's eight acres across the brook.
Yeah, there's about eight acres across it.
But there's a, there's a good amount before the brook, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But you're talking open space and that back one's also allocated as open space, so just wanted...
It is, I don't think that the applicant has to provide, you know, perfect access to all corners of the open space, I think.
There's no liability issue?
With crossing the brook, I don't, I don't think so.
No, the basket.
I guess it would depend on what we're putting over there, right?
How they would access it, if they would be able to access it.
I think if there was some like structured amenity on the other side of the brook, yes, but if any amenities are provided on the near side, I don't think that that would be an issue personally.
Yeah, I do think it would be helpful though to kind of have that vision, just that we could make those determinations of what, like you said, playground, what do you, what is your, what demographic are you attempting to attract there so that we can make sure that they, I guess, that it's aesthetically pleasing to them, that they're comfortable there, that they're, you know, able to recreate in all of this area.
Not that I can discriminate, but, you know, my hope is that it helps with the burden of housing for first responders, veterans, teachers, and elderly. So I, you know, I think walking paths is going to be more than enough for them for recreation.
I think that, I think Mike had mentioned to me maybe that you had thought about walking paths on there and I think just seeing that as part of the packet would be helpful.
Well, it would be, it would be during, when the logger comes in for this phase, he'd go in and selective harvest, you know, hopefully mostly dead, and then ground whatever stump there is and that creates the, you know, to try and keep it as natural as possible, I'm not looking to displace all the water.
Oh, right, very right. I think, I think that would be really helpful to show, like, you know, approximately which part of the lots might have walking paths, you know, approximately how many, like obviously, you know, you don't, you might not know if it's going to be, you know, 1.2 miles or 1.4 miles or whatnot, but just showing an idea of what you expect would be helpful.
This may be ahead of what you, so would the intent be that the residents would be able to treat this land as if it's their own, meaning could they recreate, do whatever? Just thinking, it's hunting season right now, you've got a lot of land back here, would that be something that would be permissible to your residents? I mean, trying to think of things that would affect.
It is, as much as I respect hunters, I'm not a hunter, but if you're renting here, I hate the thought of them taking a gun out back and shooting in somebody's neighborhood. So my first thought is, I wouldn't do that.
You wouldn't post the land?
Yeah.
Just trying to think of, you know, also just what the uses are for the land today, right? If it's, if it's open today, it's not posted, are there residents that utilize that land and could continue to use it?
Residents from...
Of the town of Waterboro.
Okay. You know, to me, that's, that's different, you know, I'm not going to be there policing it, but it still would make me nervous for somebody who's renting.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if somebody butts it and they've always hunted there, that's one thing. You know, I mean, I'm sure they know the laws, they're not going to be shooting towards the buildings.
Right, right.
And the searage and all that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of walking paths, if you're, if you're in tennis for walking paths, where would those walking paths go and what would they, what could somebody meet on those walking paths, like how far out into the woods are you playing?
Are they going across the brook, basically? Is that what you're reading to the...
Yeah, I wouldn't think that we'd go across the brook.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the map, I don't think where.
It is kind of wide there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is wide, and then it's steep where the railroad used to come from. And you actually wouldn't have enough acreage on yours, eight?
Well, there's a few acres that...
Thirteen, they say one person per fifteen acres, that's normal in your statement.
I think the, the only other things I had were that, just a note that the final site plan should include a proposed street name, and then, you know, just a comment on, the site plan was that picnic table, a bike rack and a, what was it, oh, and a dogway station would be provided per building, which is great, but just seeing kind of how those are going to be laid out on the site, you know, will they be on a lawn, will they be under trees, or are they, you know, how are they interacting with the site, I think would be helpful to see on the final plan. And I think that covers everything that I had.
So can I ask about the dumpsters? Are they, or there's bear out here.
I'm sorry.
There's bear out here, quite a bit, so are they going to be blocked? Are they going to be covered?
They usually cover.
Okay, I didn't know what style, because I seen several different dumpsters.
Yeah, no, they'll be covered, they'll be the type that get dumped up in it.
Just thinking of the draw.
There's also, are there any questions about additions to what? There's also a memo from fire department as well. I don't know if this, this was dated the 30th, have you addressed these items in here?
Yes, it should be in, one would be the sprinkler.
Yeah.
The other... I think it should all be in the package.
In the package. So his concerns about the water district, is that, that's what you've addressed here, correct?
It says water, water district, that one there. It was reviewed by John McCarry and Scott Gollum, Sprinkler Systems, as well as Dan Butler, the engineer.
Gotcha, okay.
So they're not relying on the flow test from 2013?
They feel that the flow as of 13 has not changed and therefore should be adequate, but we're also scheduling a new flow test.
That's right, I just want to make sure.
Any other questions?
Just for me, and I don't know how you guys feel, I just got this information from you, Mikaela, so today was my first day, you know, looking at that. It's a big project and I feel I need more time to do a little bit more research.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we can't vote anything tonight.
No, I know, but I mean like...
More time, like...
We need more time. And I'm not trying to hold anything up, I don't know if I feel like I've got the full grasp of everything, I think I need to study this a little bit more.
And I apologize for not getting a memo out sooner, I was at the first stop.
And I wasn't calling you out, I just said I hadn't seen it.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's hard when we, when we don't have a vision, right, that it's hard for us to make assessments when we don't know what your, I guess, we see your intention, right, it's apartment building, but we don't know what your intentions are with buildings, and I think that would be, Mikaela, is very helpful for us to kind of understand, you know, like you said, you're not going to discriminate, but what, what's your intentions and who would you target for this type of facility? I think that helps us understand, you know, kind of some of the requirements that we may want to include in here, may change some of our thought process on how it looks and what we need to require.
Exactly, and like your report today brings up things that we weren't, I wasn't thinking about, that makes me think that that's why I need more time. Just a couple of things mentioned in here that I wasn't really paying attention to.
Another thing that might help with the intention piece is just if you've put into any thought yet into, like what rooms are going to be in the units and amenities, is there going to be in-unit laundry or not in-unit laundry, just kind of some of those pieces.
There was not in-unit laundry, right?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if there was a laundry down on the first floor accessible.
That's what it was.
Each building had their own laundry room, is that what you're thinking?
I'm sorry?
Were you thinking each, on the first floor for the whole unit?
Yeah, yeah.
The whole 12 units?
Yeah. I did have a mock set, but I didn't bring them, I'm sorry.
Yes, I think, at this point, I think we've made some kind of recommendations that would be helpful for us to kind of, you know, continue our assessment and whatever we can, I mean, we don't, of course, we can't move anything forward anyway, but I think it's kind of the consensus of the board to maybe have more information from you in order for us to kind of think about those things and some of the things we think would be important.
We have to do the final grading anyway and all the submittals.
And I'm happy to talk through any of the, any part of my memo more with you, you know, outside of meeting room, if you want.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Appreciate the new information and for your continued willingness to help us see what you're trying to do, appreciate that. Next, the agenda was AR zone amendments that we're processing, we're new trading. I think we were good with the new trade management one, I think we wanted to do one public hearing, so we were waiting for some changes on the wild building.
Which when I actually sat down and did them seemed much simpler than our conversation somehow. Hopefully, hopefully they were what the board was looking for.
I didn't know that, you read some, you sent me this memo.
I sent it the day after the last meeting, maybe that's why, it was like a... No, okay.
You sent it to the...
Did you send it to the planning board or?
Um, no, what? I could have sent it to the wrong Angela too. There's a couple Angela emails that I have, so I could have, I could have done it. Oh, well, my apologies. Basically, it's the same as it was last time, I just wrote processing facilities related to agriculture or... to agriculture or wild game, and then any structure, machine, device, or system, or combination thereof, designed and operated for the purpose of making food, animal feed, feed supplement, or furs from animal carcasses or parts, as defined by the main department of agriculture, conservation, and forestry, and meeting standards as established by DACF." Basically just kept agriculture, added or wild game, and then, in, in adding to their definition, the making food part, because we had a concern that animal feed didn't cover like...
Right, the human consumption.
Yes, the human consumption of food. So adding that into there, and then you all had liked the definition of wild game, so it was really just that processing piece. And then each of the processing facilities that had been listed under conditional uses of dish, of different zones, it had like a long statement, and instead of the long statement, it was just processing facilities related to agriculture or wild game, so it needed to look at the definition to know.
To reference it.
Yeah.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Um, yeah. Here.
Would've been more the eighteen?
Yes, that's just, that's pretty much the only change is the definition, I have the laptop right.
I think that, when you read it, it makes sense to me, I think it encompasses...
Sorry about that, everybody.
Fine. So where were you, were you adding human consumption?
Yeah, she did.
There's an N in that.
It's like the first N, it's unfamiliar.
And structure machine. For the purpose of making food, animal...
Yeah, making food.
Making food, right here.
Do you wanna see it too, Angela? Just make sure.
I guess at this point, if everybody's satisfied, we can make a motion to move it to public hearing and give you both the same session.
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
I motion to move forward to public hearing, be adding wild game, processing amendment, and the nutrient end of the plan amendment.
I'm sorry.
What?
Might as well.
Yes.
Public hearing.
It's the fourth, you said?
Fourth of December, yeah.
I'll be in Connecticut one week in December, I'll have to confirm that for you.
Next on the agenda is new business, does it look like we have any? Next to communication, miscellaneous.
Does this mean that there's nothing on the agenda for two weeks from now, as of now?
Not unless he comes with...
I cannot be here on the 20th, either way, that will be, have a different meaning.
Eighteenth, it says here.
That's 2025. So I guess that is a communication, right?
Yeah, 2025, I forgot. You've got your 2025 planning board dates, the only one that appears to be in conflict is January 1st.
Which I think we can determine if we, it might even mean just not even have an agenda, so we might not be an issue. So we can, we can determine what we'll do with that as we get closer.
There's gonna be a motion.
So the next meeting is what, is it the 20th?
The 20th.
About this month, right? Yeah. I'm borderline if I'm gonna be able to make it or not. Making plans right now to not be here, but it's not confirmed.
Maybe it sounds like, even if Mike does have something, that maybe it's not the best night to, to have it anyway, so.
I was gonna say two, I can't miss two, we can miss one, but we can't miss two. James will be here, but if I'm not here, she's not here. I don't know, Caleb's...
Yeah, we, right, we, we could potentially have a forum.
Yeah.
I would assume that anything that Mike brought up will be emergent anyway, right? We could just add it to the fourth.
We don't have anything.
Yeah.
Sitting quietly right now, so...
I'm assuming they think we're definitely gonna have a meeting on the 4th due to the public hearing, so.
Yeah.
Do we just wanna call it now? Might as well, right? Then everybody knows what they're doing on the 20th.
Your plans.
Or what they're not doing.
Nothing's gotten, so.
It is. All right. Honestly, it's been heavy, so leave us adjournment.
Make a motion adjournment?
Sounds like Stacy's gonna...
I'm gonna make a fucking motion to adjourn.
Oh, those are favorite.
Thank you, Barry.